Okay, we have a bigger agenda, ladies and gentlemen, so we're gonna call the meeting to order and start like we always start. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And at this time, we're gonna call, we're gonna allow Westwood Media Center to tape the meeting and ask if anybody else wishes to tape the meeting, even a portion of it. Okay, seeing none. We'll move along to the chairman's update. First, as you might, for those of you that can't see the audience, our financial team is here for the 21st year in a row. They have received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting and has been awarded to the town of Westwood from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for 2017. It has been 21 years since 1997 that our town has received this. It's a terrific achievement for a small community such as Westwood. This annual attainment of this high level of achievement reflects the Board of Selectmen's goal to maintain high financial standards, but more importantly, the hard work of our financial department. So, did you ladies wanna come up and say hello? Come on up. For those that are viewing at home.
It's the only way they'll hear you.
Pam Duke, finance director, and I have some members of my team here tonight. Kathy Foley, assistant treasurer. Maria O'Larry, town accountant. And Laura Bukary, financial analyst. But this really is, it does start from the selectmen have always just really stressed that we were going to have a full disclosure of our financial information and accurate disclosure of that information. What this annual report is, a town is required to do annual financial statements, but this report is a broader report around those. So, you choose to do it. And 21 years ago, we chose to participate in this, and then we've been committed to staying with that. So, it's a very comprehensive report that packages around your annual financial statements. We have to change every year, keep up with any new requirements, but what's important is it shows that the, you know, again, the selectmen are committed to have the town be in full compliance with all financial regulations, full disclosure, and it is a document, it's a standard document that's used by communities nationwide, and the rating agencies love it. So, when we go out and sell a bond for the community, the rating agencies can pull that report, they know where to find the information, they know how to compare us, and it's really been a terrific tool that's helped the town maintain high bond rating. We have a AAA rating with Standard and Poor's, and this is an important component of that. And I would just like to take, thank the entire financial team, all of our staff who works throughout our accounting and treasurers, collectors, assessors departments. They really do a great job day in and day out, really try to be accurate in their processing. We do a lot of monthly reporting and reconciliation and checks and balances between departments, and it's really them doing that every day that lets us kinda then flow in at year end and do this kinda nice report to the highest standard. So, we thank the selectmen for your support always in doing this. We are proud to be, you know, the 21st year in a row. It is hard, you know, when you have staff change or things change to kinda stay up with it. There are only 41 communities in Massachusetts at this point that do the report, but we are the fifth highest in terms of length of longevity. And some of the communities above us in that length are Boston and Worcester, much larger communities. So, it really is a great reflection for the town of Westwood to kinda be in that category. And again, we appreciate your support and letting us come in every year and tell the community that this is what we're trying to achieve for them each, each year.
Well, I'm sure we'd all like to thank you for your hard work and keep up the good work. You wanna see you back again next year?
See you next year.
This is the best Groundhog Day thing we do, I think. It's really a tremendous accomplishment and a tribute to all of you for your hard work and your leadership, Pam. So, congratulations. It's really a job well done.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm often reminding people how fortunate we are to have this team. We do have a AAA bond rating, which not every municipality has, which equates to actual tax dollar savings when we go out to borrow money. So, it's a credit to all of you, and I thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
See you next year.
Well done.
Next, under the chairman's update, we have some new police officers. So, we can't show, once we get to scheduled action. Chief, did you wanna come up? See those that we'll be seeing in the streets of Westwood?
Yes. Thank you.
Boy just waving hello.
Good evening. So, this is a second fun event that we get to talk about here in a row after the financial award. We have a promotion, and we have three of our new officers that have finished field training, and they're out in the streets of the community. So, I'd like to talk about each one briefly, you have it in your packet, but just so everybody at home gets to know who they are. So, I don't know that they'll be able to see them, but actually, why don't you come up one at a time so the public can see you. So, this is Sergeant Mike Delala.
You can sit with me.
And Mike's here with his wife Courtney and his, the real stars of the show, his two boys, Vincent and James. Mike grew up here in Westwood. He graduated from Westwood High School. He was an accomplished student athlete. He then went to UMass Boston, and he got his degree in business. And so, unlike what we used to see many years ago is a lot of legacy children going into law enforcement because their dads and their grandparents or their grandmothers were police officers, which is fine, we'll take it. Mike took a little bit more circuitous path. He started his own business, very successful plumbing business, but he had that desire for community service. And so, we're fortunate enough that Mike chose to leave the private sector and come work for us here in the town, and he's really done a terrific job since he's been working here for us, and I was so proud to be able to promote him. Mike was a field training officer that I appointed, and that means that he's a senior, experienced officer that we here in town thought so much of for the level of work that he was doing, the level of service that he was providing, that we wanted him to train our newer officers, and you'll get to meet them. Mike decided to submit himself to the promotional process. We're fortunate, a lot of capable candidates, but at the end of that process, Mike came out on top, number one overall. So, it was my pleasure to be able to promote Mike, sergeant. He's out on the streets on the overnight shift currently for his main shift, but you'll see him out and about working traffic details or different shifts when he fills in. When he's not here, again, he's married to his wife Courtney, has two boys, Vincent and James, and his wife, and he also run a successful horse farm. His, Mike's wife is an accomplished equestrian. They do boarding and training and riding lessons. It's Summer Hill Farm, so that's a big part of Mike's life as well. So, we're just happy that he's able to give back to the community, and he's able to take that to the next level, be part of the management team, and happy to introduce you to Sergeant Mike Delala.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, yeah.
If I can just say, I remember when you were a new police officer joining us, and time has flown by, and you've accomplished a great deal, and this is a real tribute to your, your level of service, your, your strong policing, and just how well you represent the community, so congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to serve for the department and to serve the community that I grew up in, and I'll continue to go out there and work hard for the town. Thank you again.
Great.
Thanks a lot.
And your boys are adorable.
And next is Officer Matt Johnson.
How are ya? Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
So, Matt grew up in Mansfield, although we adopted him for a period of time when he went to Severian. So, he attended Mansfield and Westwood schools at Severian. He was an accomplished athlete there and a good student as well. Another graduate went to Nichols College where he got his business degree, and although he did have, and he does have, some members in his family that are in law enforcement, Matt also chose a private sector job, and he was doing very well. He was, in fact, when we tried to lure him over here, and ultimately were able to lure him over to Westwood, he had just gotten promoted and, you know, company car and newly married, perhaps looking on the horizon to start a family. His life was going great, but he had that calling for public service. He entered our hiring process like the other two candidates that you'll meet. You're talking about people here that we hired that are at the top of the top. We had hundreds of people apply for these positions. The people that we hire are in the top five people out of that huge pool. Matt then went to the Transit Police Academy, a very reverse police academy. He graduated as what's known as the honor graduate. He was the number one graduate in the police academy out of all his peers, and that's a trend. We haven't, in the last five years that we've hired, we haven't had anyone graduate below third in the academy. And so, these are people that are top-notch academically, top-notch physically, very high level of integrity and character, community officers that are out there. In fact, I got an email from someone in the community who I won't mention, I won't, I don't know if she'd be embarrassed or not, but wonderful video of Matt interacting with some of the youth in the community. Some people may have seen it, he was out at the track. Some of the kids wanted to race him, and they didn't, you know, they didn't think he could be able to keep up with them in uniform, and then he was showing off some of his dance moves there with some of the younger kids. So, you know, it's, it's a really wonderful thing to see that side of policing and see the type and the caliber of police officer that we have here in town. Matt has no children with him this meeting, maybe the next meeting we go to, who knows someday, right?
So, pressure on.
That's right. You know, Vincent and James can't steal the show forever, but, but he is here with his, his wife Gina, and, you know, just great things so far for Matt, as with all the officers we hired. I'm delighted to have him, so happy he chose to come serve here in Westwood, and this is Officer Matt Johnson.
Thank you, chief. And I would just like to say thank you everyone for having me. Glad to be part of the, the community. As chief said, I was here in Severian, spent some time here, but it's really great to come back and be even more involved with, with the town in getting out there and serving, and then being able to enjoy it and really, when, that day when I went and sat at the track with the kids, it's really, you could see how everyone just, it's a great community, encompasses a lot, family, friends, and just a great place to be and work. So, thank you, and I'm glad to be here.
Glad to have ya.
I thought it was interesting when I read your write-up, Chief Deckers is a Severian grad as well.
Oh, really?
So, I think you started a little trend.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
And next is Officer Joe Rashid. Officer Joe Rashid comes to us from the neighboring community of Norwood where he grow, where he grew up and where his family lived and worked for a number of years. He continues the trend, and I think breaking the stereotype of, of police officers having only military background or only criminal justice degrees, not to trivialize either, but, you know, policing, we deal with a wide segment of the population, as the board knows and everyone knows, and requires a high degree of skill in a variety of areas. And so, Joe is another business degree holder. He went to University of Massachusetts at Boston. Again, he's someone who started in the private sector, he was working for his family, he started his own business, he then went and got his degree, and then he started in law enforcement to that calling to serve in New Hampshire, where he was a municipal police officer there. Joe's strong ties to his family. There were some circumstances in his family that he needed to come back and wanted to come back and help take care of them, and so he left policing briefly to be with his family, and then he went right back to it. He worked with the sheriff's office in New Hampshire, but as much as he was having a successful career, and when we did his background, it almost seemed too good to be true with all the, you know, the things they had to say about him, but he wanted to come back home. And the Westwood, Norwood, Norfolk County area is home for Joe. And so, he came back, his wife Sally, just recently purchased a home in the area, looking to expand his family. Joe also works on the overnight shift for Sergeant Delala, so it's kinda come full circle from when Sergeant Delala was his field training officer, now he's his supervisor. Huge dividends already that we've seen, just like the other officers, Officer Rashid be able to bring to the community. He brings with him a bicultural component. Officer Rashid is Lebanese. He brings a bilingual component, he's fluent in Arabic. He brings policing from another perspective in another state, and also working with federal agencies, and so that's all to the benefit of this community. There is no one-size-fits-all policing, and we're not a one-size-fits-all police department. So, Joe's another fine example of that, and happy to introduce you to Officer Joe Rashid.
Thank you, chief. Yeah, I appreciate it, and I'm very grateful for this opportunity, in the long process to get back into Massachusetts, and I'm happy I'm here in Westwood. So, thank you.
Happy to have you.
Happy to have you. I'm sure members of the Lebanese and Arabic community would be glad to have someone they can speak to in the native language.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And last, and certainly not least, is Officer Tyler Harnish. And so, I neglected to mention that Officer Rashid and Officer Harnish went to a different police academy. There are multiple police academies throughout the state, and it's always, as the board knows, a, you know, a rush to try to get seats because they fill up so fast. And so, while Officer Johnson was at the Transit Academy, Officer Rashid and Officer Harnish got seats at the Randolph Academy. Officer Rashid was the number one graduate, top academics in that academy. Officer Harnish, as you'll hear about, was essentially like, almost like a number one overall, so he was the guide. He carried the guide on, which is the flag that leads the whole platoon in and out with everything they do, a coveted leadership role in the academy. So, somehow we found a way to split first place, and, and you'll hear a little bit more about him. So, Officer Harnish, again, comes from a unique background. His family has a business in construction and construction management. He originally was not involved in law enforcement, he attended Providence College, but he shortly thereafter realized that federal law enforcement was something that he wanted to do. He had a job as a border patrol agent where he risked his life in some very tough conditions on not only the southwest border, but up in the northeast border of this country, involves a lot of move, a lot of moving, extreme personal sacrifice, you know, very challenging conditions, right? We all hear about, you know, the conditions that are going on and trying to balance a job that he's sworn to do and the, and the humanity aspect of it, that you're dealing with people, and you wanna treat everybody fairly and compassionately. It's under very trying circumstances and long hours. That's what Officer Harnish did for a number of years. When he left the southwest border to come back to the northeast border, he realized that he wanted to make an impact in local policing. He wanted to really see the kinda more tangible, community policing-type results that we're looking for. So, although sometimes you'll see, at least in times past, police officers take a local job, and then maybe they would aspire to go to the state police or a federal agency, we've really seen that come full circle where you're having officers that wanna make an impact in the community. They wanna be able to see that and be a part of the community, not just kinda police over it, if you will, from an arms-length distance. Tyler was part of our same hiring process. Again, the five people that we hired were the top five people at the end of the, at the end of the day. It's not like we were losing candidates to other places, we were very fortunate to have them. Went to the Randolph Police Academy, as I already mentioned. Again, a top-ranked graduate, literally led the academy everywhere they went, carrying that guide-on flag. Tyler, his, his level of experience, his level of maturity and his background with, also a bilingual, functioning bilingual component in Spanish, opens the doors to that many more cultures and that many more segments of the population we deal with that, you know, desperately need to have that contact with the police department. We're here to help, we're here to serve. So, Officer Harnish is a component that allows us to do that again in our not-one-size-fits-all police department, and we're delighted that he decided to choose to come serve with us here in Westwood.
Congrats.
Officer Tyler Harnish.
Appreciate the opportunity to serve, and you guys, great community, you guys have a great department here, great chief. Spent a long time trying to get back to the local, I'm from Milton area, so just really appreciate the opportunity.
You did it. You got back.
Got you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
I think I've always told you this story, and I think at every one of these ceremonies, we sometimes repeat the same stories, but many years ago, when my twins were newborns, and I thought I had done a great job installing their car seats, I took advantage of the free inspection at your local police station, long before I was involved in town governance. And my immediate impression was just overwhelming at how helpful the police officer came out immediately, didn't make me wait, talked to me about it, went in the backseat and pulled out about three more feet of length on the seatbelt that I thought I had in tightly. So, that's always been my, you know, first impression of the Westwood Police Department. So, I just, I say that to remind everybody that it's the little things that matter, but that's really some of the services that you provide that mean so much to people in Westwood. So, we're all grateful for all of your service.
Oh, thank you. We, we love serving here.
It's an impressive group. You guys are really...
It sure is, it sure is. And thank you very much for the support. Appreciate that.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, still under the chairman's update, we have an update on the East Street Bridge project, as everyone might be wondering. Department of Public Works will soon be replacing that bridge, but apparently not soon enough. But, the Department of Public Works is monitoring the East Street Bridge construction. It will be closed, we believe, sometime during September for two weekends in a row. There will be weekends when the Patriots are not playing because they need the train to go to Foxborough, so they will, you can check your schedule, there is a period of two weeks where...
Might not be in a row.
Might not be in a row, okay. But there are two weeks in a row where the Patriots are away. So, that is more likely gonna be at least one weekend where they will be doing the work on the East Street Bridge. As soon as we know the dates, we will get the information out to you because the bridge area will be closed. There'll be no through-traffic on East Street for that weekend when it does happen.
Can I just ask a question? Mike, does Mass DOT, who's overseeing this project, keep us surprised of how they're doing relative to the schedule?
Brendan goes to a meeting, I think, every other Friday, or it's every Friday, huh? It's this Friday. And so, he's apprised, apprised as to the progress they're making. They're still on schedule, they just haven't gotten to the final point of knowing exactly, 'cause when they announce they're gonna do the bridge, they need to be able to do it. And for everybody's, for everybody on the stands, on one weekend, they're gonna lift one, they're gonna take one bridge out, one track out, and they're gonna lift one of the bridges into place and get it all set up, and then the next time they do it, there's a second track that they're gonna remove and, and replace it. They're building the bridge itself on the side, and it'll be hoisted into place.
Do you know how much advance notice we'll have so we can provide it to the community?
Yeah, I would expect it. I mean, Brendan was hoping that the last meeting he was gonna hear to take, so we're hoping that this meeting will be a meeting where they announce it. But as soon as we know, we're gonna get the word out.
Okay, and maybe put it on the main page of the website?
We're gonna put it everywhere we can. In fact, we'll also make a call.
Brendan call like we did on...
Reverse 911. Yeah, I'm thinking that, that kind of call is probably appropriate as it gets closer, but as soon as we know for advanced planning purposes, as many tools as you have to...
We'll have it on the website, we'll put it on the wire, put it out as much as we can.
The last thing under the chairman's update, we wanna remind people that on Saturday, September 15th, from 12 to 3, the new Westwood Library will be five years old. It's hard to believe it's five years, but they will be having a give-back to the community, if you would. This day is to celebrate the library, and activities include fun photos in the smiling faces booth, 10 holes of mini golf in the library. There'll be an official celebration from Sarah Gardner, who will do children sing-along at noon, and the official five-year celebration will begin at 1 o'clock with remarks from Senator Rush and Representative McMurtry, followed by an official cake-cutting. We are inviting all residents who may remember that the Colburn School played a large part in the construction of the new library, and this year, the Historical Commission will be putting out, create a small interpretive photo, photographic exhibit about the Colburn School and the historical, easy for me to say, High Street District. So, we invite everyone to come. Again, the celebration is from 1 to 3, excuse me, 12 to 3, on Saturday, September 15th, so plan your schedule accordingly. All right, moving along to our scheduled action. I'm actually gonna take it out of order because Father George is sitting in the back row, and I don't think his will take too long. So, Father, did you wanna come up, Father? And I just wanna know, we planned the library before we knew the date for your St. Mark's festival.
Still plenty of time to go both.
It's okay. They can go to both.
It's okay, yeah. Both, why not? Yes. So, thank you again for allowing me to speak on behalf of the parish. If I'm not mistaken, this, we are attempting our fourth festival here in Westwood. Yes, time does fly by really quick. I wish the police officers were here, I just wanna say something about the community and the good job that they do. Couple of weeks ago, not to get in too many details, but one of our parishioners was parked in a funny way before we had a meeting at the church, and it looked out of order. So, a police officer driving by saw it, and right away, you know, said something's going on, and pulled in to make sure that, you know, there was no funny business or anything like that. And as he was pulling out, I was pulling in, so I saw the police officer leaving, and I said, "Oh, my gosh, something's going on." I rushed to the car, I said, "Are you okay?" She said, "No, no, no, he's just making sure that I'm okay," because the car was parked funny. I think she was trying to get good reception on her cellphone or something. But, things like that, we're very thankful and grateful that we're in such a good community, and again, I wish they were here so I could thank them personally. But, it's things like this, it seems like every month, every year, we get something, and we're just very thankful and grateful that we're here. It's the biggest fundraiser for the church, it helps us a lot, but it's also rewarded in other ways, you know? We feel we kinda give back to the community. I know it brings a lot of people into Westwood, which is very good. Maybe some people will go to the library. I don't know, maybe we could do a little booth or something and gear people there. But, again, we're thankful. In terms of logistics and stuff like that, everything is pretty much the same, like we've been doing three years. The only difference is, we asked for a bigger tent, we're always worried about rain, and this thing will cover the whole parking lot. Other than that, everything's the same. In terms of getting the proper signatures, you know, some of those, like, you know, years past, we have to wait a week before, even for Health Department, it's a day before to get it signed off. Police Department did sign off, we got a detail for the two days to make sure that people are crossing the street safely from First Parish to ours, and that's it.
Okay, so, the dates, in case anyone wants to plan ahead?
Yes.
Is Saturday, September 15th, and Sunday, September 16th?
Yes.
Saturday from 11 to 10, and Sunday from noon to 8.
Yes.
Okay. Entertainer motion?
So, yeah, my only question was, we have, Mike, we have down here September 14th set up through Monday, the 17th cleanup.
Right.
Should we not put times?
On the application?
I think in the past, we've done times, yeah.
On the, the, the day before and the day after?
Yeah, so the 14th, what time do you need it at? I just don't think we should leave it that generic. We haven't in the past.
That one, it's always, it's, if I'm not mistaken, the application requires, when does the alcohol actually come to the building?
Right.
So...
The last year, we did an hour before.
The day before.
It's a day before.
This license shall be effective from 11:00 a.m. on the 15th to 10:00 p.m. on the 15th, and on the 16th, from 12, I think it should say, p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
But then they have to clean up, is what John's talking about, so...
Yes, the day before and the day after.
No, the motion that was drafted for us just said cleanup, it didn't have dates.
Set up and clean up, yes.
That's what I'm saying, we should probably specify the times for permit.
The Karen drafted or wrote?
No, we...
Oh, 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 I see, I see, I see.
Yeah, Mike?
Noon on the 7th, on the 14th to, I don't know what, 6 o'clock on the Monday?
When, when are you done cleaning up on Monday, generally?
Oh, well, most of the stuff is done that night, Sunday night.
Yeah, that's right. It's when the, any excess alcohol gets picked up.
I would say by 2 o'clock, everything is, is out on Monday.
I'll make it 2. Yeah, just give them plenty of time.
2:00 p.m. on what date, though?
On Monday.
Monday.
Monday is what date?
Monday is the 17th.
It's the 16th. So, it's noon on the 14th through 2:00 p.m. on the 17th. Is that right?
No. 14th is Saturday, Sunday?
14th is a Friday.
No, 14th is Friday, right, right. We get delivery, right.
So, noon on the 14th?
Yeah.
Through 2:00 p.m. on the 17th?
Right.
I just wanna comment that in our materials, Father, it says that you've been asked to have two additional TIPS-certified servers in addition to the one that you've been doing, and that doesn't present a problem for you, and that's part of what you're going to do. to do?
Yeah, we have, it's just, for some reason, a lot of people went to Greece this year. So, you know...
The economy's good.
Yeah, it's getting better, from what they say. Yeah, they're trickling in. We have a couple parishioners that they own bars and restaurants.
Good, okay. Well, I think it makes sense, just in case the one that's certified gets sick or something like that, or you need coverage.
You know, I always just, whenever I get some sort of information that's required, I always just send it to Karen.
Sure.
I don't hold on to it and do it all together.
No, but that is the one change from past years, that you've been asked and you will fulfill that, which is great.
Yep, yep.
So I would make a motion that we grant a beer and wine license to St. Mark's Greek Fest 2018, valid from Friday, September 14th at noon through Monday, September 17th at 2:00 p.m. Shall be granted contingent upon receipt of required permit and final inspections from building, fire, and health departments, and submittal of a liquor liability insurance policy.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Hope the weather holds up.
I know.
Yeah, you've got the contingency plan, though.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, next we have amendment to a land disposition agreement.
Thank you, Dan Bailey, special town council. With me here tonight is Peter Zaka, who represents Giorgio Petruzziello, who is the other party to the land disposition agreement. The board will remember that in early June, you signed a land disposition agreement regarding the Islington project. Just to summarize, there are four different town-owned parcels involved in that. It's a three-phase closing, with the first phase being acquisition, you know, of the town parking lot by Mr. Petruzziello, existing town parking lot, rebuilding on that side of the street. The second phase is moving Wentworth Hall to the other side of the street, building a community center, moving CVS to the other side of the street. And the third phase is the closing on the Islington Community Center. So as Giorgio and Peter were moving towards, you know, finalizing their lease with CVS and making arrangements for financing, there were a few little cleanup items that we had and that they brought up actually fairly early after the document was signed. And we said, let's get it all cleaned up, get sort of everything straightened out, and we'll come back with an amendment. So you've got an amendment in front of you that does five things. The first, you know, and a couple of things have to do with timing, and a couple of things have to do with things that CVS was looking for. The first item is if the, what we call the phase three closing, but what that means is if, for whatever reason, Mr. Petruzziello does not close on acquisition of the Islington Community Center property, you know, and it gets sold to a third party, the parking for that, we've made clear in the land disposition agreement, all of the parking for any other development on the Islington Community Center would have to be on that parcel, because it wouldn't be, you know, Mr. Petruzziello, if he closes, owns both of them, so nobody cares, you know, where the parking goes, whether it's on the Wentworth Hall parcel or the Islington Community Center parcel. But if it gets sold to a third party, you know, that third party's going to need to basically park it on that site. Okay? So that's one of the changes. The next one is also if that closing did not occur, Mr. Petruzziello would not have access to the Wentworth Hall parcel from East Street. So we've agreed to grant an easement from East Street to the Wentworth Hall parcel if, again, the Islington Community Center closing didn't occur. We also added language to, you know, one of the easements that's attached to the land disposition agreement. This is the easement that we're going to have in common, the parking area that we're going to share next to Wentworth Hall and the community center and CVS. Just remind everyone, that's a shared parking lot with 72 spaces. CVS has up to 40 spaces under their lease. And the concern they had was if there are special events at the community center or Morrison Field, they were concerned that there would not be parking, you know, that their spaces, even though it's all common space, would get used up. So what we agreed to do is we will put temporary signs up to protect CVS spaces, as well as have a monitor anytime there's a special event at Wentworth Hall, the community center, or Morrison Park. The other thing that we added is CVS requested that the town, let me back up. CVS, like any retailer, when they enter into a lease, they require the landlord to put use restrictions on nearby land, you know, rebutting land that the landowner owns. They do that to protect themselves, so that, you know, if it's a gas station, somebody doesn't put a different gas station on the opposite corner. CVS is no different. And what they asked for were certain restrictions on exactly what you'd expect, pharmaceutical sales, you know...
Card store.
Yeah, yeah, card store, et cetera. And they asked if we, the town, would be willing to agree by contract to do the same with respect to the town-owned portion of the parking lot. It's going to be a parking lot for, you know, a very long time. So, you know, working with Mike and Nora, we worked up language that was acceptable to everybody on that. It's important to note that there is no use restriction on the Blue Heart Tavern parcel. Okay? And then the last piece is just simply that there's language in there now that says that Petruzziello and the town will work cooperatively on maintaining the parking lot and allocating the cost fairly. So the expectation there is that basically Giorgio and Todd Corchon will sit down, you know, before snow season and figure out, you know, who's going to be responsible for what.
Dean, number two, the 30-foot easement, is that essentially the curb cut that exists today?
Less than the curb cut that exists today.
What's the width of the curb cut today, do we know?
Oh, it's wide.
It's like 60 feet.
60 something.
At least.
Yeah, it is wide. Yeah, I mean, the easement would have to, it'd be, the easement will be 30 feet, you know, side to side, but when it gets to East Street, it's going to have to flare out.
Right, okay.
Any questions?
Just to go back to that, John, just to explain, usually the radius, that's within town right-of-way?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the, you know, your 30 feet comes out to the town right-of-way, and then you start to go out.
Yeah, no, I'm fine. I mean, I'm glad it's less than what's there today, because that's really in the event that phase three does not occur.
That's right.
And we still might want to make it marketable at that point.
Yep.
So I just didn't want it to be too restrictive.
Okay, any questions? Okay, so we need a motion.
We need public.
Any questions from the public? No, seeing none. All right, let's entertain a motion.
Okay, I would move that the board approve the first amendment to the land disposition agreement as written here and execute. Same.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Dean, I guess you're staying right there.
I am.
You have the Girl Scouts of Eastern Mass...
Yes.
Right of first refusal.
The, just a little bit of history here, more for people in the audience or watching at home. This goes back, we might call this the very last item of the building that we're sitting in. But this goes back to when the town acquired the former Girl Scout house that was behind Town Hall in connection with development of the new police station. There ended up being litigation between the owner of that piece of property, the Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts, and the Westwood Adult Girl Scouts. There were some old agreements under which the local Girl Scouts felt that they had certain rights that the Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts weren't honoring. I'm very happy to report that that litigation is settled, that the parties, and I've talked to council for each of them, that the parties had one request of the town. One of the things that we had negotiated as part of the overall package is a right of first refusal. So should the Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts desire to sell that property, the town has a right of first refusal, so we could match any offer that's made for it. The term of that right of first refusal was to 2056. As a result of the settlement, the parties agreed to ask us, ask the Board of Selectmen to extend it to 2066. Okay? So that's the only change. I mean, I've got a red line, I can show it to you, but, you know, that's really the only change in it. There's a piece of the agreement that still has a blank that's called the town contribution. Just, again, remind people that if the Girl Scouts were to sell that house tomorrow, for example, the town wanted to be able to recover the costs it put into building it. So we added up all of the costs to the town, and that's the town contribution, and we recover, you know, we recover that. So if, just, if they sold it for $600,000 and the town contribution was $400,000, the town would recover $400,000. Now, that goes down by 5% over 20 years. It's already, we're already burned two years off of it. We're still chasing a couple of numbers. Nora has them, and she's on vacation. But I'll hold the signature pages in escrow until I get those numbers and can fill in the total amount of that town contribution.
And Mike, can you report that to us when that information is known?
Yep.
This is such a relief that this is, this litigation is behind us, all I will say. I would move that the board approve an extension of the right of first refusal for the Girl Scout house located at 790 Gay Street from 2056 to 2066. 2056 to 2066.
Is it, the right of first refusal is with the Girl Scouts of Eastern Mass, or who?
Yes.
Okay.
They own the property.
Yeah. I will second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
Etsy has the documents, but I'll work with her and get them later.
Next, we have the Hedgerow Lane abandonment in Westwood Estates subdivision. Attorney Zaka?
Good evening.
Good evening. Back in Westwood again.
Yes, would you just identify yourself, gentlemen, for the record?
Garrett, I'm the chairman of town council for this particular matter.
Hey, Garrett, nice to see you.
As well as did plenty of work on the Islington thing that we just talked about.
Yes.
And Peter Zaka, I represent Dave Spiegel, who's trustee of the Canton Street Realty Trust. What you should have in front of you is an agreement, which has been executed by what I'll call the interested abutters to Hedgerow Lane. If nothing else, it signifies that we have an agreement with all those abutters as to what we hope will happen to Hedgerow Lane. And the easiest way to do this, if you have the agreement in front of you, exhibit one. So when the planning board approved the new Hedgerow Lane, they had approved it based on what you see on exhibit one, which is that most of the pavement that relates to the old Hedgerow Lane be removed, and that we have driveways to service the three houses that abuttered, abutted, is that a word, abutted? The old Hedgerow Lane. So we have an agreement now with all those abutters that that, with the approval of the selectmen, that that could take place. We need the approval of the selectmen, as you are road commissioners, so while the planning board said this is what we want to have happen, it takes your approval to allow us to actually go forward. That was what I'll call step one in this process. The second step, again, agreed to by all the abutters, is that we eventually want to, as laid out in this agreement, totally abandon any town rights in what I'll call Old Hedgerow Lane. And for the record, you only have easement rights in that. You don't actually own the property. You took an easement. But given what's happening, where it's basically disappearing, there's no need for it. And eventually, we'll go back to the planning board to have them amend the subdivision to dissolve it as a road, and we will slice it up, if you will, and have it conveyed to the various three abutters, so they all end up with legal frontage on the new Hedgerow Lane. The importance of this is that pending your approval, my client's building permits for Hedgerow Lane have, cannot issue, because apparently they cannot assign building numbers to the various lots. So it's our hope that the board will approve this. Phase one, as I say, is to allow us to go forward with the planning board has approved to remove that, and then also to allow us to go forward for the abandonment which, of the easement, or relinquishing of the town's easement, which eventually will take town meeting action. So a warrant will have, a warrant article will have to be placed. And in the meantime, we would like to actually go forward to get all of the lot numbers and building permits released to my client. We understand that if that, if the board approves that, Garrett will draft another agreement where my client will fully indemnify, take full responsibility for the old Hedgerow Lane pending the dissolution by town meeting.
Abby, anything you need to get aware of, concerned?
Yeah, so I guess what you have in front of you is kind of the multi-phase process looking at the temporary, the agreement, the first phase, the temporary condition of what the planning board had intended.
I can't hear you, I mean, on television.
Oh, sorry. I just want to make sure, I mean, this was, we had a placeholder...
It might be...
With the Springtown meeting on this, so I know there was a lot of work done. I just want to make sure that you don't have any concerns.
It might be easier to go back a little bit.
Okay, fine.
So, yeah, there was. There was a, you know, a 2016 subdivision approval that had this condition that really just related to removal of pavement and street infrastructure of this old Hedgerow Lane that was laid out in 1987. And because it was a public way by easement, you know, nobody can remove anything, because you have the responsibility of maintaining it as a passable way, right? So that forced the subdividers to come to you for your approval, and I believe you took the position that you weren't going to do anything until you were satisfied that the neighbors were affected by that.
Right.
Change were happy, and that's really what the agreement Peter brought before you is. It indicates that everybody's satisfied with the change. But for you, it's actually two steps, and the first step is you would have to convene a public hearing to abandon the way, which really means discontinue your maintenance obligations. So it would still be a public way on the registry of deeds, it would still be an easement open to the public, but you would have no responsibility to maintain it, you would have no liability for anybody that goes on there. And that's something the selectmen can do by themselves, to actually discontinue it and make the whole thing go away, like it doesn't exist, no public rights, that's what takes town meeting action. And that, you know, they want, the subdividers want you to take both steps. So we would have to convene a public hearing, and then somebody would have to sponsor a town meeting article.
Okay, okay.
It looks like it affects three properties. Am I reading it wrong?
You're right.
Huh?
You're right.
There's only, so when I look at the signatures, I mean, I don't know the neighbors, but are the Shanks two different families, or?
No, what happened was, there were three parties, and the trust, the Canton Realty Trust, actually bought one of those properties. So now, there's, the only three people affected by this are the person who wants subdivision done, Canton Street Realty Trust, and then the...
The other two neighbors outside.
And, yeah, Davies.
Mrs. Davy.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because when I was reading it, I'm like, those are three properties, but there's only two families signing off.
The only, the only other thing to add, from my perspective, is when you read the agreement, as Attorney Zaka pointed out, it does get into this exchange of property rights later on for the frontage, but that's really not what you're concerned with. You're only signing on to the agreement because they have agreed in the first place to release any and all claims against the town.
Right, we're giving up our rights, then they have a way to sort out the rest of it.
Right, right.
The private property on this.
So that part, which is a big part of this agreement, really isn't the part that we're concerned with, the town.
Ready for motion?
Take any public comment first?
Sure.
Anyone wish to be heard on this matter, in the public? Okay, seeing none.
Okay, so I would propose that the board execute the attached written agreement, number one. Number two, properly notice and convene a hearing on the abandonment of old Hedgerow Lane, and if warranted, after the public hearing, vote in favor of this abandonment. Number three, sponsor a warrant article for the next town meeting to discontinue old Hedgerow Lane permanently. Authorize its special counsel at CSRT's expense to prepare an agreement that would allow the release of the remaining addresses for new Hedgerow Lane prior to town meeting action on the discontinuance article, which agreement will address any maintenance and liability concerns and will be considered at a subsequent meeting.
And I will second out of necessity. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So Mike, did you want to do the next one for us?
Yeah.
And explain?
So, this is to put the board and the town on notice that we have received a decision from the attorney general to disapprove three zoning articles that were approved at the November 2017 town meeting due to a procedural defect. Now, the procedural defect in that instance was that the planning board had held hearings on those articles prior to meeting with the Finance Commission, but they wanted the ability to react from comments made by the Finance Commission members and/or the public attending the public hearing at the Finance Commission. So as is their standard practice, they kept the public hearing open for the Finance Commission meeting. Finance Commission meeting was held, the Finance Commission ultimately approved the article as written... So as is their standard practice, they kept the public hearing open for the, the Finance Commission meeting. Finance Commission meeting was held, the Finance Commission ultimately approved the article as written and as presented, no further requirement for modification. However, at the point at time, in time when they were getting to that vote, uh, or the, the end of the meeting, when the planning board had intended to, uh, close the hearing and, or, or to put it off to another meeting, um, and then close it, there were only two members left in the room and therefore they had no quorum and could not do so. They held a meeting subsequent to that, they didn't have further discussion, they closed, they closed the hearing, they, they adopted the language as was presented to the FinCom, as was adopted by the FinCom to present the town meeting. But they were left with no choice to do it that way. They did not advertise that hearing for fourteen days prior with notification to the abutting towns and things like that that they had done at the beginning of the process. They were only closing the hearing, they weren't accepting any more comment. That was considered a procedural error. The state and the Attorney General's office, uh, realized that that was, you know, a minor defect. There's a, a provision in state law that would allow, uh, the Attorney General to approve the articles, even with the minor defect, um, and what it required was that we post, uh, notification to the public that, um, that we were going to be, that the state was going to be implementing that procedure as defined by state statute. If there was no, um, claim or no opposition raised by anyone, uh, the state would have then gone forward and approved the, approved the articles as approved by town meeting. Now remember, more than two-thirds of town meeting approved all three articles. In fact, I think the votes were very close to unanimous on all of them. They were important articles from our point of view. Uh, one was related to, uh, accessory use in a highway business, Article Ten. Um, that in particular was, uh, requested by one of our local, uh, office, uh, building owners, um, who was reaching the end of a lease with a, with a, an outfit that had, had earlier closed, um, but they were running out their, their lease. Uh, the lease was coming to an end, he wanted to market the property to get another use in there. Um, that would be a positive on our value. And he indicated that, um, if he could allow that, that the use or could incorporate, um, an eating facility, um, or the ability to have some sort of cafeteria, snacks, or vending machines for employees, which weren't currently allowed, uh, for that property, um, available, he thought the, the property would market better, um, and that was the reason for that article. The other one was to redefine, uh, medical uses in the community and to separate out those more clearly than they were defined, uh, currently in the bylaw. And the third was just housekeeping matters. The attorney, that, what happened was during the fourteen-day period of the appeal, uh, or of, of the notification that the state, uh, the Attorney General might be approving these articles if no, no, uh, no, uh, no one raised an issue with the defect, uh, a letter was submitted, uh, raising a number of issues, um, that weren't relevant to the particular, uh, articles that were presented, uh, but the state was left with no alternative. The way the state law is written, it says that if someone raises a claim, that is all that is necessary. It doesn't have to be a viable claim, they can't pass judgment as to whether or not it was appropriately raised. It's simply a issue was raised and therefore, um, they could not go forward and approve it. I think that that, um, in this instance shows, uh, weakness in the, in the statute as currently written. The town meeting spoke, um, that's our legislative body. Um, all of the public officials spoke, uh, prior to that, um, leading up to that town meeting vote. It was overwhelmingly approved, um, and this minor defect should not be impairing the will of the people, um, that was expressed at that town meeting. So I have submitted to the board for its consideration a letter, um, which, uh, goes back to the Attorney General's office and raises those issues. And I think it's important to do so, uh, if not to get this decision changed, which we would hope that they could find a way to do that. But if they in fact can't, they understand that there's a very serious weakness in the law as written and they look to make an amendment. So this doesn't impede some other town's ability to execute the will of the people as expressed at town meeting.
Mike, one thing I didn't see, can it, can, can the person who made the claim file a withdrawal? In other words, once it's filed, can it be undone?
I, I haven't, I haven't asked that question, but I could tomorrow.
And have we notified that landowner of the?
Yes. The planning board spoken with the landowner.
Yeah, I thought the letter was great, Mike, I do, I agree with you. I think that it is amazing that this statute takes away all, um, discretion of the Attorney General. This was an incredibly minor defect. We have spent an inordinate amount of time on such, um, minor detail that I just can't imagine that was the intent when, when that was drafted. So I'm hoping we get some sort of response from the letter. And if not, you know, work to see if we can change the statute. Because if not us, some other municipality will have to spend an awful lot of time on what I don't believe was the intent of the law, to spend this much time on such a minor, minor defect. The law does allow a curing process, which we went through, but unfortunately has the second step that it seems odd to me, takes away the Attorney General's discretion. So thanks for your efforts on it.
And I, I appreciate the, um, you drafting the letter and at least responding because there are so many consequences to these not being approved at the state level. So, uh, unfortunately, it means that we have to redo and the planning board has to go through all their work again with the Finance Commission and then town meeting, um, but at least good to be on record. So I support responding back.
So do we need a motion, Mike, or just give an approval?
Yeah, I, I think you should just make a motion to approve that a letter be sent and to, uh, between now and tomorrow, you take another look at it, see if there's anything else you, you think should be changed and then I'll send it out.
So moved? So I'll make, I'll make a motion, uh, that the board, um, signed off on a drafted letter by the town administrator to the Attorney General's office, uh, asking for a review of the disapproval of zoning articles from the two thousand and seventeen fall town meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mike. All right, moving along, we have the Westwood Environmental Action Committee. Come on up, Steve, too, you can come up too, Steve. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having us.
Would you guys just please identify yourself for the record so everyone at home knows?
I am Maria Costantini, a member of the Environmental Action Committee, I live on fifteen Spellman Road in Westwood.
Thank you.
Hi, Julie Gervais, a member of the committee as well, I'm at one eighteen Colburn Street.
Thank you, ladies.
Welcome back, you're regular this summer, right?
She's becoming very popular, yeah.
So.
We have a few talking points and, uh, my, our apologies because I was, we were hoping to have a short PowerPoint presentation, but we were made aware that we should have presented it earlier. So, um, uh, we'll just talk a little, just a briefly five minutes introduction to the issue. So, um, we thank you for your time because this is an issue that we have been discussing for many months and we finally thought that it would be good, useful to bring it to your attention and have feedback and let you know what, what we think are the good things and the bad things of this issue of banning, banning plastic bags. Uh, so the environmental issues of plastic bags are well-known because there, there are too many, they last forever because they're not biodegrade, they pollute our streams, they litter, they kill wildlife on land and, um, at sea, and also from a more practical standpoint, they contaminate our recycling stream. So, um, many communities in Massachusetts in the last five or six years, um, they have been thinking about what to do with this problem of plastic bags. And, and they have implemented this, what is called a plastic bag, bag ban, which actually focuses only on, uh, the single-use produce bags, the non-produce, single-use plastic bags with two handles that are given away at grocery stores and many retail stores. And, um, um, with the ban, um, other plastic bags such as produce bags or newspaper bags, dry cleaner plastic bags would be, would remain, um, available. It's only the single-use produce bags that, that have been banned. Um, one, uh, one issue that we have kind of been wrestling about with this, the issue of the ban is that, uh, the warrant articles normally allow the distribution of brown paper bags in your, uh, in your plastic bags because although the goal is to bring your own bags, not everybody would, would do that, uh, even under ideal conditions. So these brown paper bags have, um, require more, a lot more energy than plastic bags to make. So there is that kind of trade-off, the environmental issues and the, the energy consumption. And, um, um, so city can, uh, can have a fee for plastic paper bags, they can, but towns like Westwood are not allowed. So, um, having a fee would, would be considered disincentive to, to get, for people to require, to use paper bags because they had to pay, but that's not an option for us. And other things that people may wonder is about whether this would hurt the businesses. And we have looked at, uh, the businesses in our town, the large retail stores, and many, uh, most of them have also stores in towns that have been affected by the ban. So they will probably adjust adapt as they have been adapting, um, slowly to the, as more towns, uh, took on this, this, this ban. The, the possible issue could be for the small retailers and the, the warrant could be written in such a way that small retailers are exempted from the ban. So the, the last thing that I, um, what we want to tell you a little bit is about, uh, our effort to try to understand what the people in Westwood think about this. And we started a, a survey, which, uh, we originally had in paper, but then thanks to, uh, Julie and also Stephen, Steve Hart, became, um, was put on video media. And so we have, uh, had six hundred respondents in a very short period of time. So Julie now is going to talk about the, the ban, the, the survey, as also some feedback we received from Wegmans about their experience.
Great, so, um, so, yeah, we put a survey out, um, we distributed the survey through the Westwood Wire, through Facebook, through local recycling events and at the Council on Aging. We had a six hundred and three responses that were recorded overall. Um, I think one of the findings that was interesting is thirty-six percent of respondents were unaware that the recycling carts might not be picked up if they contain plastic bags. So I think that points to some needs for education around the fact that, um, you shouldn't be putting those plastic bags in your recycling bin. So I think there's certainly a need there. I think one positive outcome, forty-six percent of respondents said that they already bring their own bags when they go to the grocery store, which is, which is a good trend. And I think overall, sixty-eight percent of respondents said that they would support a ban on single-use plastic shopping bags in Westwood retail stores. Um, so I think there's certainly, um, community support around this. Uh, we have reached out to, um, Wegmans, one of, um, the members of the committee, talked to, um, their sustainability coordinator, and I think we provided a statement from him, um, in the notes. And I think he had a, a very thoughtful response to the pros and cons of all sorts of different, um, types of bags. Uh, so I think, you know, one of the challenges that we see here are just the trade-offs of if you put a plastic bag ban in place, um, without a fee, um, our concern is that the paper bag use will go up. Um, and so we were very hopeful that the state would be able to pass legislation and fortunately that didn't happen. Um, so those are some of the trade-offs that we've seen. Um, I also spoke personally to the, um, store manager at Roach Brothers in Wellesley, who does have a ban, who said that he sees no issues with that at all and things have gone fine in Wellesley and he feels like the residents there are happy with it because it was a ban that they wanted. So, and we've certainly heard different perspectives on the issue.
So, um, since I spend a lot of time in Falmouth, Falmouth has a, has a single-use ban in all of the stores and I find it somewhat amazing even to go into, you know, Marshalls or TJ Maxx that they no longer give you plastic bags. So I see that more and more places are doing it. I can tell you that sixty-eight percent still means there's about a third. I have one of those in my house who's yelling at me about this already. So I think that, um, ultimately I think it's something we should, you know, have people at least consider. You know, I don't think the, the paper bags really matter much anyway. I mean, I think people always say paper or plastic and some say both, but, um, at least we cut down on one of them. So I think ultimately, and I think I've, I've said this to you before, I expected you guys to have this in front of us a long time ago. So, uh, more and more towns are doing it and, uh, I think it'd be a good thing for, for Westwood to at least experiment with and try to move it forward and see. You know, I, I think most people don't even realize what contaminates your recycle bin now. Most people don't know that pizza boxes can no longer go in your recycle bin. Um, and so it's definitely going to take some education in how many people really read it. So I think this is a great step in the right direction to use our recycle bin more.
Yeah, no, I think it's the wave of the future. I mean, at some point it will be, um, outlawed statewide. If twenty percent of the municipalities are already there, it's only going to continue. I think it's a great thing. I do think though, I think we'd have a little bit of a challenge enacting a bylaw that separates large retailers from smaller retailers. I don't suspect, I, I suspect that would be challenged. So I just think we have to be a little bit careful there and conscious in that we are trying desperately to, um, support the smaller businesses. So just something to keep in mind, but, you know, not, shouldn't become a complete impediment. I, um, because I actually do think the larger retailers are dealing with this and, and they're not as opposed as they once were because it's becoming the trend. It will ultimately, I think, become statewide. So, I mean, I applaud your efforts. Um, I think it's something we need to continue to develop with our economic development folks and keep moving forward. That was my initial reaction when I read this though, was just the fear about the paper bags. So, you know, I, I'm with you, I think we need to continue the advocacy and the education and I didn't know that those couldn't go in the recycling bin, I have to be honest.
Now you know.
So a couple of points, you can separate smaller retailers from the larger ones and it's been done.
Square footage?
Yep, by square footage, it's like five thousand square feet and under, not subject to it. But I'm curious, in, in your exploration of this and talking to some retailers, would it be possible to ask them to do it on a voluntary basis?
I don't think we explored that with them, but.
The, the difference is, and you have Wegmans, Wegmans has it imposed on them in other communities, Chestnut Hill for starters, CVS, Walgreens, they all have had, been, been asked to do it in other places. And what they, they do is they redistribute their bags to places, the plastic bags to places that can use them and they now have paper bags. So, you know, a lot of effort to put a ban in place, but maybe, you know, I, your recommendation is not tonight asking us to pursue a ban, but maybe a voluntary request. And I think when Nora's back from vacation, sitting down with her and, and talking about a coordination of that effort might be worthwhile. Yes, when people don't have plastic bags, the stores double up on paper bags. They don't just give you one, they double it up and give you two. It's in, but I, I know when Wegmans first got here, two things would go in a plastic bag and two more things in another bag, and I ended up walking out with ten plastic bags for stuff that I could have put in two paper bags. So there's got to be a balance, but I think some of these stores, we could say, you know, listen, we don't want a ban, but we'd really like to work with you. Um, the other thing you have in your recommendations is, um, reusable bags, trying to do something. And as I was reading this, I thought of the, um, the Boy Scouts and how they are often looking for Eagle Scout projects and that this might be an opportunity. for Eagle Scout projects, and that this might be an opportunity for some individuals who are pursuing their Eagle Scout. I'm not sure it could just be one, maybe it could be a team, but we've learned in the past that young people tend to be more effective in educating adults than maybe we are in educating ourselves. And I remember back in the day when we were just using recycling, none of the elementary school, none of the schools were recycling their paper. And the kids got educated and aware of what to do, and once they got aware, they were going home and telling their parents how to better recycle. And so, I think if you approach some of the, there are two troops in Westwood, and there's two troops, Donna, in Westwood? Do you have two? And some of them have some young men from Dedham. And there are also some young Girl Scout troops where the young ladies are actually going for their higher-level awards, so I don't want to leave it just for the young men. But I think there's an opportunity to get them involved and engaged, and maybe they could go about, you know, sort of a plan and then do some things. Take it from there. I just think there's an opportunity, and I know they're always looking for meaningful projects to help the community, and I think this might be one.
Yeah, when we went to this Mass Green Network, there were a lot of communities talking about their experience and how they went about. And obviously, involving Girl Scout, Boy Scouts was a big, a big part of their efforts. And there's also high school students designing those bags that you can reuse to, so to make it and then give them away, so there are...
And the companies, if you talk to the businesses, they may want to put their names on those reusable bags and sponsor it and pay for it, so there can be more of the bags distributed. I wouldn't ask the scouts to solicit businesses for that, but maybe there's another way to do it, you know, as a component.
It's interesting. If you look at the list, most of these places, a lot of them are on the Cape, so almost every place on the Cape, it is banned now, so.
Well, they have...
On the ocean.
They have the beaches and the ocean and the ponds and, yeah.
So, they're, so the other towns, if they've had scouts, maybe they're programs to model after and bring here?
Yeah.
I think it's worthy of...
We'll discuss it more based on your feedback and...
Your efforts are great.
We would like to talk to the small retailers, as I said. We need to see how they see this, how they might, they might be impacted or, you know, cost-wise, whether brown bags are more expensive than plastic bags and...
Yeah.
Because part of the cost of running business, that's all, so.
Right, but for them, if they have to, if they get a switch imposed on them, it's a bigger financial burden, because they might have an inventory of bags that they can't redistribute. It might just be them, so that's why...
There is always a time, before it goes, if it's implemented, there is a...
But we want to have a bigger impact, and that's the larger stores.
Yeah, exactly.
And if they, they've done it elsewhere, they could do it here, and they could do it without it being forced. It'd be nice if they could do that.
Hopefully, but we don't know.
My notice on a public hearing, but did anybody else want to have any comments? No? Okay.
I actually have a question of the board.
Yes, Claire.
Trying to think about...
Come up, just so people can always hear you, so.
Claire Galickowski, 320 Dover Road. I'm also on the Westwood Environmental Action Committee, and I've been thinking a lot about this, because I am very concerned about the increase in paper bag use. The point of this bylaw is, we prefer to call it a bring-your-own-bag bylaw rather than a plastic bag ban, because the point of it is really to reduce the single-use products that are out there. I learned at the last Selectman's meeting I came to that there is a bylaw in town that only allows one freestanding sign at a business. And I was thinking, would that apply, like, for instance, if a store wanted to put a sign out front that said, "Did you remember your reusable bags?" Which I think could be very helpful. Would that be subject to the sign restriction in town?
Our town planner is here behind you, nodding your head, yes.
Yes, all signs need affirmative.
Doesn't mean they can't get it.
Right.
Would there, would it be possible to pass an exemption for that, or to propose an exemption for that?
That wouldn't be wise. It'd be best if they got the approval that they need, just like everybody else does for signs. Otherwise, I think that might be an awkward precedent. But it shouldn't, if it's, we're predisposed to doing it, it shouldn't be, that shouldn't be the gating issue.
Okay.
A sign wouldn't be, if a sign was inside the door, it wouldn't be regulated.
No, but that wouldn't be very effective either. People aren't going to go back outside to their car.
That's exactly right. People will already be there going...
So, Roach Brothers already has signs inside, but it's, but you don't see it until you get to the checkout.
That's too late.
It's a little late. Even I don't go back out at that point.
Yeah, we're on television. We admitted that on television.
You know, with everything, education starts and behaviors start changing. So, I think what you're trying to do is say, okay, let's, let's look at this and see if we can start changing behaviors here, but let's see if we can get buy-in from the businesses to be part of that, to be a partner, as opposed to having it imposed on them.
Absolutely.
I think that's a, from a business-friendly community, that might be a better approach, anyway.
Yeah, well, I went to Carmella one day, and they give you a paper bag, and then they put the paper bag inside the plastic bag. And I asked, "What would happen if there was a ban on plastic bag?" And they, she said, "We'll not use, we'll not give it to you." So, sometimes, being honest, a plain level field of every bag...
Now, are their bags the type that would be, they are the number two or whatever it is? Yeah, okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work on it.
Good teamwork.
It's been a lot, a lot of work.
Yeah. Don't even say that patiently.
Hi, Donna.
Hi. Donna McCallum, Director of IT, and I'm here to discuss the website. I've provided a summary for you, but I'd like to just hit on some key points to provide a context for what we're talking about, for the redesign, because I know there were some questions in the previous.
Would you just use, lift the microphone up so that people at home can hear?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, yes. We selected our current platform, the vendor, Civica Software, in September of 2015. And at the time, it was a platform that had 400 municipal websites that it was managing. And it's a content-managed system, had a lot of advantages compared to our previous website. It was also one in which was fairly prevalent in municipal websites, so it provided us an opportunity to move to something that was more geared towards municipal websites. Our previous website vendor was a website developer who managed a site for us. They weren't, their whole purpose was not municipal or government websites. So, we saw this opportunity and we took it. That was September of 2015. October of 2015, it was sold. The company was sold to a much larger company, which is the way that this goes, to Granicus. And Granicus is a large company that provides municipal services on many different platforms. I know that they've subsequently purchased IQM2, which we use for legislative management, and we've subsequently purchased GovDelivery, which we use for The Wire. So, right now, they are our platform for our content-managed system for our website, IQM2 for legislative management, and The Wire for the e-delivery of our, of that newsletter. Granicus is a very large municipally-based service company. Everything they do is either for state, local, federal entities. They don't do any commercial service whatsoever, which is a good thing for us, because all of their business is geared towards, again, municipalities. We were also very happy to know that several of our services were all now managed by the same company, offering us the opportunity to integrate those services. And we were really looking forward to having GovDelivery be integrated with our website and IQM2 further melted into our website. However, Granicus had other priorities, decisions to make. They purchased another website development company in February of 2018. We went live in January of 2017, and in February of 2018, Granicus purchased a different website development company. This is not the first time that a town like ours gets put into a position where we agree and go with a company, and then at some point, not long after, sometimes we make that decision, the path is changed for good or bad. We were told that Granicus was still going to continue to support Civica no matter what in March of 2018 and in April of 2018. And in May of 2018, we were offered a financial incentive to migrate, because they were discontinuing the support of the Civica platform. So, we were given an option. It was a financial incentive. We're not paying any more than we would have if we had continued with the Civica platform, but we're getting the advantage of moving to a more up-to-date development platform, one in which Granicus has said that they will support going forward, because it is a more, an easier-to-use development platform than the Civica platform. So, we were in a position where we could choose to wait until the end of life of the Civica platform, which is probably going to be about two years. They haven't told us exactly when that is. Or take advantage of a financial incentive right now to move in the near term and potentially use lessons learned from the last couple of years to correct issues that we saw specifically with the Civica site. And these issues were things that were either scheduled to be enhanced or changed by Civica, but that never came to fruition, or because of other things, it changed along the way, and now we, we have the issue. And a search is a good example of this. When we first started with Civica, Google allowed, and I'm going to, I'm going to describe it as almost an embedding of the Google search within a person's website. And so, we could effectively use that Google search. It would be limited to the confines of our site. Google stopped that policy. So, then, what we started with had to be changed to the native search client that Civica used and was not going to be updated. So, those are the types of issues that we felt it would be better now to make the move to a platform where we know the new development company is called Vision Live, and they have 800 website clients, all government entities. We felt as though that was, the opportunity was now, and we should do it. And we're calling it a redesign, but it is really a migration to the new platform. We have the opportunity to look at our homepage and a little bit of the design, but this is not meant to be an entire redesign of the core website. There are certain things that the new website, the new platform has, and one of the functionality that I like is that on a mobile platform, you're able to modify the mobile experience by page, and not only the homepage, and then everything sort of falls along with it. So, if the DPW only wants certain things to show, once you move to a phone device, we could modify that. So, there are a lot of advantages to the new platform, and I've identified those in the, in the description that I've provided to you. We have a very short window to actually make the migration, so we're hoping for a January Go Live. And again, I'm considering this more of a migration and not necessarily a total redesign. So, that's where we are with the redesign. With the search, which I think was a topic in the last...
Yes, it is.
There are a couple of things that impact our search. One is that almost every document that's scanned in is scanned in as an image. It's scanned as an image for several reasons. Our town clerk actually physically stamps many of the documents that we put on the website. It's stamped with a timestamp that determines when that is the last, the known time that it was, be put on, before it's put on the site, to meet open-meeting law and to meet other government, you know, sort of regulations. That being said, she stamps it, scans it, puts it up. So, it was never meant to be a document management system, but it has quickly evolved into that. Its intent is not to be a document management system. To that end, we are, actually, we have an RFP that will be going out soon for a document management system, which will have a public portal that can be searched. And hopefully, many of these documents will be, I don't know if pulled off the website, but certainly the search, which should be integral between the website and our public portal, it hopefully will be seamless between the two, so you could search both, both databases and get those results. IQM2, we're planning on transitioning agendas and meetings for all boards and committees to IQM2, so that they can be searched on that platform. That being said, even if you scan a document, becomes an image, and you put it on the website, upload it, you have the opportunity to add keywords and metadata that's not being added right now. So, the search is really limited by the, the person that's uploading that document and what they put into the search. It can now only look at the title of the document, and then if the title of the document includes some keywords that can be used in that search, then it will. But it will not search the content of that, of that document. Unfortunately, that's the way it is right now. That being said, I think we have to figure out a different way of dealing with documents in general, because right now, we have probably 15,000 documents on the website. And when I tell our development companies that we have that many documents, their jaw drops, because no one ever has that many documents loaded up on a website. We are really using it as a content, as a document management system. So, that's, that's where we are. The search will be improved. It will not give you something where the data can't be found in the documents, though, and I think that's our biggest problem. It's our biggest hurdle.
What if it's not scanned documents, but let's say a Word document, well, let's say it's a PDF file, is that the equivalent of a scanned document?
You could have, you could create a PDF that's searchable, but then when, once Dottie takes it...
Forget, take Dottie out of the equation?
Yep.
Board of Selectmen has minutes?
Yep.
And the minutes have words in it, but we don't want a Word document, we want a PDF version.
You print a PDF from within Word, and it produces a searchable PDF. Very few of our documents are being put up there in that way, because they're, most of these are being stamped in some way, I think, time-stamped.
So, ours, we, we actually do it exactly that way.
But, but you're putting in IQM2.
They go in IQM2.
IQM2 is different. Okay, so, that's why we're, we're move, we would like to move all of those documents to IQM2. Dottie's posting them as a, a notice.
Yeah.
That's what she's posting them as.
You've got different purposes of the documents being on the website.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, the question is, you know, what needs to be on the website? You know, do the notices all have to be on the website? If we have the minutes in, and the agendas in IQM2, does her stamped copy have to be on the website? These are all discussions that I think we have to have as a, as a group and decide what meets open-meeting law, what we have to post, because I think, you know, town clerk's coming from one direction, someone else wanting to search minutes for specific topics are coming from another direction, and you have to be able, do you put two copies up there? I mean, then we're getting a little bit, you know, out of the...
And it's an awful lot of time involved, too.
Yes.
The ease of the searches, though, from the old website to the new website, really diminished. So, even putting like Selectmen's Agenda, which I did today, Tonight's doesn't come up first.
No, it doesn't.
Like, that's bizarre. You know, I just, I, like, what drives that?
Well, it's driven by the native search that is the, we did have that when it was a Google-embedded search.
Right, so in the old website...
We lost that, well, we lost that capability even on the current website, when Google stopped providing that service. And I'm not sure exactly why they stopped, but they, they did.
So, that's, that's what I have found, when, you know, I'm not even... So that's what I have found, when, you know, I'm not even looking for a word in a document.
Right.
Like, a current meeting agenda for next Tuesday.
But it's looking for all instances where the word "agenda" is coming up. And if you're, you know, are you doing the logic so you're looking up, you know, "board" plus "of" plus "Selectmen," or putting in...
You're way beyond me at this point.
Putting in quotation marks. I mean, there's lots of ways of searching.
You have to think like the rest of us, Donna.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, there are lots of ways, lots of ways of searching.
Can we get back to, though, on the old system, we did have, like, current meetings?
Yes, well...
That was helpful.
We had meetings by category, and you could bring them up by Board of Selectmen or, you know, so you could say, give me...
So you're going to have meetings, though, so we can ask these questions or offer our recommendations, right, from the public and us? Weren't you going to do things to get input?
Well, you asked, I'll go with the question. You asked to volunteer, so did you have any luck?
Yes, actually, I think some of them may be in the...
Oh, wow.
I don't know who else is, I know Dave Hackens. Dave Hackens here. Something, nobody else? Okay. What, well, we, well, I don't, I want other than staff.
Right, yeah, you need users.
I need users, I need visitors, because staff have a, what I've realized, and this is not going to be, staff have an ulterior motive because their focus in life is their department or board. And no matter what, they want their department or board to be front and center. That may, and it may not be, and they understand the government structure, it may not be the way a visitor comes to the site. So we need to have, we need to have some public information.
Have we done any kind of public surveys? So when you go to the Commonwealth website, you know, at the bottom of the page, when you find your information, it just says, "Was this helpful? Was this what you were looking for?" I mean, can we do some sort of survey?
I mean, on the, on the search? That usually is typically at the end of a search. We don't have that capability right now. What we do have is for the last year or more, we've subscribed to a service called Site Improve. And primarily, I did it for ADA compliance, which we will soon be required to be in compliance with. But even aside from that, it looks at misspellings, broken links, the, obviously ADA compliance. It looks at behavior. And so you could look at a page and see how far down do people click? You know, when do they stop clicking? How, you know, long pages below the fold is what they, you know, sort of intend. People just look in the top, and if it's, if it's not there, they don't go further down. We could, we could look at that. It's one several steps higher than even Google Analytics. It also identifies what the most visited pages are. Obviously, you could do it by department or focus, or you could do it overall. It's sort of fascinating to see those analytics, though.
Do you think on the new website, we would be having a link on every single page to be able to go to the, what is it, IMQ2?
Well, that's, for agendas and minutes, it would be good to have...
Yeah, in other words, on every single page, looking for a specific document, click here, and then the search box pops up and says...
Right, well, the search will be on every page, but even addition to that...
To send them to the other one.
Yeah. I could send you samples of the, of potentially a current Vision website that I like, because the search is on every page, and additionally, agendas and minutes are a link on every page, which they are on our pages as well, but people don't see those links. But the search is, is obviously a regular search bar, but it gives quick links to things that people ask a lot about. So that becomes a way in which for you to provide quick links, and it also has a link there, front and center, for agendas and minutes on IQM2. So, but our, our challenge will be to move all boards and committees to IQM2 by January, but that's my hope. We'll see.
So Donna, the reason this was on our agenda at the last meeting is because the request was to enter into a five-year contract. A three-year contract Mike could have handled. Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
Right, that was for our existing maintenance, which is no more than what we're paying now. So we told the company that we wouldn't enter into that contract, that extended contract. They said that it would potentially lower our overall maintenance costs because we're, it was a ploy for them to get us to commit to five years. After that meeting, I told them, no, we won't commit to five years, and we'll go just as we have been.
And I appreciate you being back here to talk to us about this. We're now, not necessary, but great to have the discussion. What do you know about the new company and the new platform, besides 800 municipalities already working with them, that makes you comfortable with this?
Well, it's not a new company. We've worked with Granicus.
New to us.
Yeah. Uh, new to us.
Well, the platform, Vision.
Oh, Vision, Vision Live. They, we had three demonstrations, and we've talked to, to other municipalities that have used them, all with glowing recommendations. That being said, the same was true for Civica when we went to that. You know, I try to just search for the, you know, powered by Vision sort of at the bottom of each municipal's page, and then just call, cold-call those people to find out. I don't rely on the clients that they tell us to only call. Dedham has Vision as well, but I think it's because they might have started with another company that was bought out.
They got there in a different route?
They got there for a different group. I think Newton is also, who started out with Civica, is now potentially looking at Vision and Quincy, that started out with Civica.
So I was on the user side of Civica and Newton. It's a nightmare.
Oh, interesting. Oh, my gosh. So now I talked to the IT director from Newton, and he thought it was, they were great. Joe?
That's, yes, and I know Joe. But it's not, it's not easy as the person inputting everything. It's very...
Yeah. Well, HTML is still going to be, in some cases, you are still making a very code-dependent page be simple for an end user.
Yeah.
And it is a whizzy wig to the extent possible. When you want to get a little fancy is when you need to go to the actual HTML code, and that's not always...
That's, that's where the issues are.
That's not easy for an end user. We don't expect an end user to understand or be able to do that.
It was very...
Right. So it depends on how, it depends on how detailed or how different your page you want.
So to my earlier question, you've done your due diligence, and you think this is the right next step.
It is the right next step in the short term because I think it gives us the opportunity to correct what needs to be corrected. And it still doesn't stop us from moving forward at some point to another system. Getting a new development company with a whole new web design and a migration is a two-year process. So that's a long process.
We don't have, Civica for the next two years is not the answer.
Yes, exactly. So this was the short-term solution to what we felt had to be corrected, and that's what we're doing. I'm hoping that we can make these changes that will make it easier for the users and correct the search issue and get a handle on the documents, because those are the two big, the two big issues.
Yeah.
Okay.
The one thing I do like, Donna, I just flipped over to Dedham as I sit here, I do like the calendar on the front, which is very nice, town versus community.
On the Dedham page?
Yeah, that offense can get posted.
And I think...
See, Town Hall, tells you that there's a Board of Selectmen meeting or a community.
I encourage people to look at other towns' websites because there is, I haven't found one with the amount of information that Westwood has on, in comparison. I think we're a victim of our own successes in that it's, it's difficult to manage because so many, we upload so much. And searches are sometimes easier when there's less pages to search and less documents to search through. So, but I like the Dedham interface. It's, it's nothing fancy, but it's...
But it's clean.
It's clean, yep. And the way the calendar, the calendar has links to, you know, any event you could, you could post on Twitter, Facebook, send it to your Outlook, Yahoo Calendar, Gmail. It's much more user-friendly.
Yeah, it definitely is much more user-friendly.
Yep.
Good.
Thanks, Donna.
Okay, any other questions?
Nope. Really appreciate the update.
Thank you.
We have our performance evaluation.
All right. So for those assembled and those watching at home, the performance evaluation process is somewhat different than any of us would ever be used to in our day jobs. And so the performance evaluation of a town administrator, the requirement is that it's conducted in open session. And the way that it's developed is each of the members of the Board of Selectmen submit thoughts to the Human Resources Director, who then compiles a composite review. So that's actually what I'm charging, charged with delivering tonight. And overall, it's a really positive conversation. So I think it's just easiest to read from it, right? If Chief Silva can kind of bring those guys up and talk about them, I think I can talk about you for a little while. So areas of strength. Mike was highly engaged in the Islington Center redevelopment process, which is a major undertaking for all involved. The Islington Center redevelopment process is a great example of strategic planning, and if completed as planned, will serve as a major accomplishment in your tenure as town administrator. So we thank you for that. Mike provides great support to the management team, because we saw here tonight with the finance team, that goes without saying. Feedback from staff indicates that Mike is always available. When they need him, you're a good listener and a mentor. It's important to remember that during the last review period, we opened up a police and a fire station, major accomplishments for any municipality. We should also mention that we were part of the groundbreaking of the reconstruction of the Dedham-Westwood Water District Water Plant. The Board of Selectmen appreciates increased use of technology to streamline the town's business. As you will notice, we now use laptops, we've gone paperless. Instead of having staff develop these massive binders that they loved making, that has been a major enhancement for us. In addition, those seeking permits from the town will notice that that process has also gone paperless. So those are major achievements for the town. Mike deserves a great deal of credit for strengthening the relationship with the leadership of the school department. This will be a major benefit for the town. Last year's budget steering committee was conducted in a very cordial manner. We were able to come to consensus around an increase for the schools early on, and that created a lot of space for us to do other creative things as we moved forward. Feedback from the board on areas of improvement, communication and engagement. The Board of Selectmen, while there has been some improvement in communication with the board, the board wants more. Mike communicates when there are urgent matters for our attention. More communication on a regular basis between meetings to keep us updated would be appreciated. With residents, we need to dramatically enhance communication to citizens in the communities, community through such avenues as Citizens Academy and regular Twitter postings with timely updates of town information. With the department heads and your executive functioning group, Mike's direct report, your direct reports value the monthly meetings, but feel they can be run more efficiently by not delving into such great detail at those meetings. Want to ensure we have controls of information disseminated from the Board of Selectmen's office. You personally should review all those documents that have our names on them. And as an overall goal, succession planning, we would ask that you look ahead and develop potential candidates for all senior staff positions in the town. Senior staff members are very dedicated and proficient in their areas of expertise. The board would like to see some staff assigned to roles and responsibilities and special projects outside of their individual disciplines. We believe this would both broaden their skills and demonstrate their versatility. Together, Mike and the Board of Selectmen need to develop a strategic plan to provide the framework for updating the town's master plan. We would ask that you ensure that at least one or a group of us are involved in updating the master plan. And I think for all of us, and you in particular as the board secretary, is to look at the way that the board operates. It sometimes seems that we have operated in the same manner for decades, and sometimes we need to focus on how we operate and why we do what we do and dedicate time to certain issues and not others. So progress against FY18 goals. There's been considerable work completed over the past year. Some highlights include bringing the police station online, on time, within budget, a major accomplishment. Bridge work is underway. Aid to the elderly, consistent funding. The Islington Development Project completed. Study on Gay Street sidewalks, a large lift is well on its way. And more importantly, that doesn't get a lot of visibility, is the settling of the collective bargaining agreements with town staff. Goals for FY19, measurable, specific, that will help the town achieve its objectives. We talked a little bit tonight about an official Selectmen page for town social media, a monthly calendar on the town website with all town events, meetings, trash collection, emergency information, school cancellations. In addition to FY19 goals that categorized by departments, a section should be added that includes categories such as improved communication and strategic initiatives. FY19 goals should also include emphasis on updating the town's master plan, significant involvement by you and the Board of Selectmen, proactive involvement by you and the board in the Mass School Building Authority to discuss Westwood's elementary school buildings, reconstituting the town charter review committee so the review of the town charter can be initiated, improve engagement with Selectmen, schedule a retreat for the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of defining roles and expectations, addressing communication issues, and setting board goals for the year. The board would ask that you require department heads to report annually on the activities of their departments. Ensure that issues are tracked and responded to in a timely manner so that no one is surprised. Most important message to convey to you, Mike. You have a long and successful career with Westwood. It is critical that you have a succession plan in place for all senior management so the town can continue to operate effectively in the event of anticipated or unanticipated absences. No one can argue that Westwood is a highly sought-after community to live in. We enjoy a high standard of living. There's a tremendous amount of work going on in town government to foster that result, and much of the credit is to you. You have played a key leadership role for decades in our success. It is incumbent that the town not rest on its laurels. We must focus on the future and ensure that we are operating in the most efficient and effective prospective manner. Regards. Any thoughts, comments?
There's a lot there to think about, and some points that are made that I'll be seeking some clarification, just to be sure I fully appreciate what you're saying. But I felt, I'm happy with the evaluation, and I think it's fair.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any comments?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, into our new business. First, Abby. Dave? Planning Board Associate Membership Process. So you are looking for two associate members for the planning board?
Thank you, yes. If you recall, I think it was about a little over three years ago, you appointed, the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board appointed their first two associate member positions. They both have expired. One of them, most recently, this past June, and he did express interest in being reappointed. I did bring this to the planning board's attention, and I think it was at their June meeting, and they recommended that, that we re-advertise the open associate member positions.
Okay. So for those that are home and watching this and might be interested, what would an associate member do? Tell people what, you know, they have to go to every meeting? Is it different than a regular planning board? Obviously, they're not elected, so...
Yes, the associate members are, also refer to the alternate members. They've been appointed to three-year terms, and they're, they've only been called when needed. I think in the past three years, there was only two times when they were called in. The purpose, the main purpose is if there was a conflict with one of the full planning board members. There's five voting elected members. And if there was a conflict of interest, if someone was absent for any reason such as a sickness or...
Yeah, also there, it's important that there, as a special permit granting authority, there are situations where four votes are required, four affirmative votes to pass or to approve an application. And so there is the potential that if you have a board member who is, has a conflict of interest or something, has to accuse themselves, you can get into a situation where an applicant would be unwilling to, would be concerned about proceeding because it's, they're not sure they'd have to get a unanimous vote or something. So the, I have some, some concerns about the role of the associate... So, I have some concerns about the role of the associate member, but it is only, they're only activated at the discretion of the Chair of the Planning Board. So when there is a unique situation that, where essentially it's an option, it's having this alternate available. So if suppose a Planning Board member suddenly left town or something like that, you would have a way to continue meetings until the Selectmen and the Planning Board could appoint someone and an election could be held. It's, I think it's, I think we need to be careful in selecting these candidates, because, you know, it's, the Board members, we are elected, and we, to have appointed members sort of sitting there that are not elected, I think it's a little troubling if it were, if there was potential for abuse. I've thought about a lot of the different scenarios out there. You know, there are situations where an applicant might submit an application in the spring, and then there's an election coming up. Two of the Board members could be gone, and so they're not able to proceed in the fall, because the requirement of the, for the special permits is that the Board members who heard the original application are only the one, they're only able to vote on that. So like, if you have the five Board members, and then two of them are gone, there's no way they can get the four votes necessary to approve the special permit. There are ways around that. There, we could simply, we could have reopen the hearing. But there's concern that if you know this is going to be happening, then there's an option. Having these alternate members available, you could in advance have them sit on the committee if you have retiring Board members, and that would allow the applicant to proceed. But also, having these alternates available would prevent a situation where everyone shows up to the hearing, and because a Board member's not available, we decide to postpone it. So both residents and the applicant would be inconvenienced by that. So I think that it's a prudent option to have out there, but it's very important that it only be exercised for necessity and to avoid any situation where it could be perceived that, you know, you're appointing people. I mean, they would seldom actually be used. And so it's up to the Chair of the Planning Board to decide, you know, if it's necessary to invoke this, if there's no other way to solve.
You said, Abby, only twice.
Right, I think once was a subdivision application that we knew would continue on for several months. That came in right at a time just before an election. And then another time was a special permit application when we had a last-minute absence.
Okay. So the plan is to advertise it in the month of September?
Well, can we just talk to the process? I apologize, I didn't read this till this weekend, so I just, I just want to think about it a little more. Because I think what seemed odd to me, though, is if I read the bylaw, then I read the proposal, I don't actually think five members of the Planning Board, maybe I read this wrong, and three members of the Board of Selectmen voting is appropriate. I actually think technically it's improper, because you're creating eight equal votes.
That's the way we did it. That's the way it's designed. The...
It's actually, actually it was seven, because I recused myself.
It's actually...
It's a recommendation, but the way I read it, it should be a recommendation from the Planning Board.
No, people apply.
Yeah.
They get, they can come to a public meeting.
A joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board.
And we all have equal votes.
It's also the same process. So if a Board member is, leaves, if there's a vacancy, then the statute says that it's a joint meeting of the remaining Planning Board members and the Selectmen who would appoint someone. So actually, I mean, you wouldn't use the alternate to permanently step in. You would just, this would be like, oh, we don't have someone, we have a meeting scheduled, we use the alternate, but then we would convene and appoint a person.
And that process is defined by state law, fulfilling a vacancy on an elected board. So it's incorporated in the same, into our town charter for associate membership.
Yeah, there were two, in the bylaws, we have defined what these associate members are, which apply to all of the other elected boards as well. You could elect school committee associate members if you wanted to, not Selectmen. But that's in the town bylaws. But the state statute specifically provides for, if five, there are five members on the Board, you can have up to two, and that's the same way the town bylaws.
You need a minimum vote? What if six members of the eight vote? You know, what if there's a, if there's a split?
I think majority.
Majority rules, so regardless of how many vote.
It's a majority of people in the room at the day of the vote.
Right.
So you would need, well, yeah.
And it's similar to when there is an opening, and we appoint somebody to fill a position until the next election. It's similar to that voting process. But the distinction is, we all come together, the two Boards, with people who have submitted their interest, who want to be interviewed in a public meeting and votes taken. That's one step. Once we have associate members, a different step is that the Chair of the Planning Board determines when to call upon an associate member to participate in any application process, for whatever the appropriate reason may be.
Correct.
And for just that application process.
For just a single application process.
I believe this was invoked for the Westwood Estates application process. And so actually, when Mike McCusker and I were elected to the Planning Board, the first couple of meetings, we sat in the audience during the discussion about Westwood Estates, which I thought was a little odd, but that was the process that had been set up.
Yeah, so, but there's, it goes, it's out of our hands at that point.
Right.
It rests with, resides with the Planning Board Chair to determine if and when and who to bring on.
Right.
So I'm okay with it.
So what's the driver now, though? I mean, what's, do you have one coming up? Do you have a concern?
The other appointments we made are up.
Right.
But you don't have any particular hearing that's of concern.
Right.
Right, there's no, there's no current or anticipated need. It's more of a, if something did come up, then just if we knew that someone was going to be missing or whatever, like, this gives us the option of having the alternate member versus coming back to this Board and setting it up then. And having to interview people, too. We have, this gives the opportunity to advertise for this and give everybody notice of what's going on and what this means and what the role is, because it's not like a, it's not like you're an associate member, like you go to every meeting. All this is really like an alternate, a pinch hitter kind of thing. And so advertising that now versus having it come up in an urgent situation later, when there wasn't adequate time to notify everybody or to get people aware of it, and we just, I think that could be more problematic.
We'll probably get a thousand applicants. If you read social media, everybody's a planning expert, right?
We had about a handful the last time.
You did last time?
Yeah.
And you already have one person who's expressed interest?
Uh, yes.
Terina.
So, we're going to go forward with it? All right, so I'm just going to read what people should do if they are interested. It's going to be advertised in the month of September, and if you are interested, you should submit a letter of interest and a resume to the Selectmen's Office. There'll also be advertisement on social media. Once the deadline closes, for submitted resumes, packets will be sent to each of the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board members. A joint meeting will be held, the Selectmen's Office and the Planning Board, in early to mid-October to conduct interviews on the interested candidates. And then we would ultimately have a vote, would be a roll call to appoint our associate members. So if you are interested in serving as an associate member of the Planning Board, please send a letter of interest and your resume to the Selectmen's Office. Thank you.
Do you want us here for the next item?
Or the comprehensive?
The comprehensive.
Comprehensive plan? Sure. So next on our agenda, we have an appointments for election offices, established of a Comprehensive Plan Committee and the Dedham-Westwood Water Commission. Are those that still?
Well, it, no. We shouldn't go forward that one tonight.
Right, because, okay. So we're just going to do the first two. So let's do the appointments to the Election Committee. We have an appointment from the Town, a request from the Town Clerk for Election Day, September 4th this year, the day after Labor Day. And they're looking to appoint Roger Christian, Ann Christian, and Lauren Murray to the, as election officers for the town for that. And the, and I'm assuming the general election in November.
I would move that we appoint Roger Christian and Ann Christian and Lauren Murray as election officers with terms to expire?
Yeah, June 30th, 2019.
June 30th, 2019.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving along, next we have the Comprehensive Plan Committee. So, would you like the floor back?
Sure. So the Planning Board, over the last couple of months, over the summer, have been looking at our goals, and we've put together in your packets a plan. We've set an aggressive goal of adopting an updated comprehensive plan or master plan by the end of 2019. So in about a year, 12 months to 14 months from now, the Planning Board has talked a little bit about, and we recommend you start appointing a steering committee. We had recommended about up to 18 members on the steering committee, possibly nine to 18 is what we were looking at. And we got that number because there are nine specific sections in the current comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan was adopted in the year 2000, and that was a very big, a whole new plan created at that time. So right now, we're looking to update that plan. We, if you recall, we started doing that in 2010 and again in 2013. And then we got a little bit busy with University Station and some permitting, zoning, and some development projects. So now, the Planning Board would like to pick that back up. And the timeline that we were looking at of trying to get this done in about the next year to year and a half would be to start looking for steering committee members that can really spearhead this process. Look for individuals that have specific subject matter expertise and writing skills to help write the section. So that's where we came up with that nine to 18, looking at maybe one to two individuals that are really take the lead on the specific sections. And then we would also request from you a, some financial support for a consultant to help with the public facilitation portion, specifically the vision session. It would be our goal to have a large, well-publicized vision session to really get everyone together and start working on some overall vision for the community and some goals. The steering committee would really take the lead on each of their sections, and then they would be responsible for the outreach, interviews, focus groups, meeting with individual committees and agencies to each section, and then come back to the Planning Board to present their specific sections. And then the Planning Board work closely with them. And the Planning Board would also schedule time on their meeting agendas over the next year to answer questions, give feedback, and give guidance back.
So we are, so fundamentally, the Comprehensive Plan is the responsibility of the Planning Board. It's really something we own, the, this is a major definition of what, what we want the future of the town to be. And we're asking you to help us by creating this steering committee that would facilitate a process, not just of rewriting a document, but of community engagement. I have a lot of ideas, which I don't, tonight is too much detail to get into, but I really envision this as a steering committee of people who then go out into the community and create essentially working groups of citizens who have interests in specific topics. So not sort of a big committee that rewrites the whole plan, but a committee that's organized, or a steering committee organized around the sections of the plan. And then those sections would involve bringing in lots of other people for a community discussion. So we want to talk about town centers. It's going to be working groups talking about town centers, not just a typical large meeting talking about the whole thing. I think as that committee is formed, we need to, I mean, everyone's going to be a volunteer for this. So it is very important to discuss kind of at that initial meeting of the steering committee, the kind of process that is reasonable, that can be done. But I really want to focus the steering committee on the idea of civic engagement. It's not just updating some document. It's an opportunity to say, what do you really want in the town centers? And bring people out who have come to meetings and been frustrated in the past to say what it is they really want, and then to pull that together into a consensus document. I think we can use the process of updating this plan as a way to engage the entire community and to find ways to bring people in, so that it's not just people who've been involved a lot, but newer people, young people. There could be kids from the high school. I mean, they're not going to be on the steering committee necessarily, but they could be in these working groups talking about the issues that matter most to them. So I think, I want to encourage that as we create this steering committee, that we, we think of it as a committee to facilitate this sort of civic engagement and development of a vision for the future.
The only question I had is, and I looked at the, it says eight subjects, areas. One of them is open space and recreation. Don't we already have that going on right now in the middle?
Right, that was a good question. Can't we just adopt what that, all that group has done?
So that, I think that would be one of the easier ones. So essentially, that working group is to say, we've already invested all this. Is everything that was done by that committee captured? You know, is there any, are there any, what other components are there? That might be a very straightforward one, because it's already in process.
And just so people at home understand, we're looking for land use, town centers, housing, economic development, natural and cultural resources, community facilities, and transportation.
Yeah, I think the challenge is, you know, and I think it's, engagement is great, but getting, getting the mindset to be, what do you want to see? Not like, what I'm upset about?
Well, and our big challenge, I think honestly, is that without any resources, I mean, other towns would hire a consultant, and not to just write a plan, but to actually set up all these meetings and things. And we're going to be doing it with Planning Board members kind of acting as liaisons to different parts of the plan, Abby going to tons of meetings. We're going to be having to do a lot of volunteer work.
Can you stop there? Why aren't we hiring a consultant to do that? Where's, didn't, what do we do in 2000?
We have hired a consultant in the past, but...
Yeah, we hired Phil here.
Okay, so he's not available. But, I mean, if communities are, everything you're describing, to me, sounds like an absolute overreach ask for volunteers, to head up meetings, to engage the community. Not everybody has the skill set to run a meeting like that, facilitate a meeting, and then be responsible for writing it. I just think it is a setup for an inadequate outcome. I don't know why we aren't looking to engage a consultant to help us with this undertaking.
So I think it would be a great idea to reach out to MAPC, for example, to other groups.
Are you looking at me saying we don't have the money to do that?
Wow, I didn't say it, but it was immediately on my brain at the moment.
My first reaction is not to hire consultants.
It's about forty to fifty thousand to do that, so.
A lot of money.
I mean, we...
Actually, it's probably a lot more, more like a hundred...
It's not that it's not worth it, it's...
But part of the problem is, I mean, as we all know...
Like a hundred thousand?
Yeah, I mean, usually it's at least a hundred thousand.
So that just speaks to the reality of asking volunteers to do what is being described is not going to get...
Not a lot.
Let's just say, people will think twice on being on the steering committee if they really listen to what you described, Dave.
It's...
Now, you, you love it. You would do it in a heartbeat, and you will do it. You know, you're part of it, but...
Fun of what they would do.
But I don't think that the first answer, though, was to hire consultants. Part of the challenge in all of these, and we see this in all of these issues, is getting the engagement, right? So I would prefer some initial steps, like an online survey. Like, you know, there are other things we can do that don't require people to go to a meeting to collect data.
Right, and I think that's what we were trying to do here is, I think with the Planning Board and with staff we discussed, it's not necessary to always hire a consultant. A lot of times, a consultant is hired for the initial plan, a new plan. When a town takes on an entirely new plan, we're looking at an update. And I think with Westwood, what we found is, we do have a lot of people that are, want to volunteer and want to be involved. And then we also have a lot more staff than we had in 2000. And then, we also have a lot more staff than we had in 2000. We have more staff to help support this. We're going to have the open space plan. We're also working on our housing production plan. So, we want to really capitalize on our, our staff support to help guide this and then integrate the planning board and use those resources to limit the, the scheduling of the meetings, having the Westwood Media Center available at planning board meetings. We have the recording secretary. So, taking advantage of already existing committees that we have and, and having those resources available. But then, outreach for the steering committees to conduct interviews, have these online surveys, do their outreach and research on their own. And then, the staff will really be there to support the steering committee members.
That's a little bit different than what Dave was describing. When I came in tonight, I thought at the very least, we should also have, I know you talked about a consultant to facilitate the visioning session and whatever. I thought that if that's the right entity, they should also handle writing, like receiving things, or, you know, maybe it's staff. But I think we should define steps along the way and where staff plugs in to see if it's adequate or if the consult... But I, what you described, Dave, I just think is over-asking for a volunteer, for people that might, might be interested, but might not be able to go to that level. And I think we need consistency across the categories. So, maybe if it's spelled out, to John's point, don't, you know, let's not just run and hire a consultant. I get that a hundred thousand is a huge, 50 is a lot of money. But we want to get to a strong end product that involves opportunity for many people to provide input, right? So, I mean, there was a lot of input provided back when we did it in 2000.
And, and I think the input that we have, I mean, I heard of online survey. I, I don't think an online survey is, is relevant here if we're trying to get the, the flavor of the community, because I think there, there are elements of the community that may become more engaged and other elements. I think it needs to be a statistically relevant sample set type of survey that you predetermine, you use a sampling technique to identify the people who are going to receive the survey and be asked to fill it out so we get a, we get an objective input into the, into the process, not, not a...
But you can't require people to be at the meeting to provide that.
No, I, I understand. I think the survey is a way to get that relative information from people that won't come out to, to the, to the meetings. But their opinion is very important.
Like, I think the survey is something that, it also, it needs to be measuring something. It's not just a poll. Like, I mean, we have a survey from the previous plan and, you know, of the questions of, so one section is like, you know, do you want to see bike paths here? Do you want to see bike lanes here? Do you want to see bike lanes? As much as I am in favor of that, I feel like, you know, the, their kind of questions required some, they were set up a little bit, you know? And I think that you want to measure things. You want to say, well, what do people really want? And then, that takes a little bit of design and thought to it, not just a poll of, do people want X, Y, or Z? Because that doesn't consider A, B, and C. And so, I think you, I think we want to start an iterative process. I think getting people who are interested, based on the description of what this process is, would be a starting point, forming a steering committee. You know, what, all of what I described, yeah, they're, they're going to be like, wait a minute, I, I didn't sign up for all of that. So, maybe the steering committee has this discussion and says, we need help with all of these things. This is what a consultant would provide for us. This is what we need help to do. And you say, well, some of the parts of the plan could be straightforward, like it's already been done for open space mostly, unless they think of something else, or implementation steps might be stuff that's not in, being considered by that yet, or, I don't know. But other parts are wide open, and I think you'd want to...
Would we ever think of taking some, some of the eight remaining topics and just focusing on a few at a time?
Pieces.
To see how the process works, rather than adopting this one-size-fits-all in the beginning?
Well, I also, I think that in the past, we did try to do too many things at once, right? I mean, and then it gets stale. Like, we really need a deadline. We really need to say, we're going to do this by 2019 and let's get it done.
To keep it motivated.
What you're saying, John, is maybe do two of the topics and then roll into the next two, and then, so it's more manageable from a staff standpoint?
This is massive. And, and my fear is too, when you kind of focus on eight at all at the same time, you get the same thought leaders, right? You'll get the same people showing up at all these meetings. And so, I'm not sure you get the diversity of thought.
And this is, the, the sections that are laid out, the eight, or nine section, those are required sections and, by state law, what you have to have in the comprehensive plan. And we have a good base already. A lot of what staff would be doing, which could seem overwhelming to a, a board member, is updating the existing data. So, staff will be working on that, and the steering committees could be responsible for really gathering input and, and communicating and outreach. So, a consultant isn't always necessary for an update. And I think right now, we have a new planning board that has a lot of energy and residents that are looking to get involved. And I think we have more staff than we've, we've had before. And we've started this effort a couple of years ago, and we just got to, get a little bit further to bring it all together.
I mean, we can just throw it out there. I mean, it's just going to be an online survey. You're interested, and see what kind of response we get to start.
Yeah, did, um, yes. Does, does, do each of the categories in whatever we put out there, will it have some description that goes with it?
It does not right now.
Oh, yeah. We could do that. We did start on a draft, kind of steering committee job description that we kind of put together, so we could...
Yeah, so the form you see in your packet is a very drafted.
Yeah.
Try to engage what people, but...
But we could, yes.
But because of the, I think it would be best if we did something that people could, like, drop down, like, so if each one of those, I'm interested in land use, and then if you click on land use, it expands to...
I think the other thing is, direct, direct people to the existing comprehensive plan and refer to the existing section so you can see what is already in the plan that they're going to be building from.
Yeah. So, Abby's, I think you started a content page that was going to be for the comprehensive plan to do a lot of expla...
Explaining it.
Explaining of all the sections and what it is, and you have like a question, sort of a frequently asked questions sections in your packet. That was where we were going with it, to go up on the website.
You're going to get dropdown boxes on our website.
I know HTML coding. We'll work on it.
Okay. So...
So, what's the timing in terms of hosting this and getting interest and then the Board of Selectmen appointing? What are you hoping for?
We were hoping to have a steering committee appointed in October, probably a earlier October meeting, and then, in, over the next month, advertise and start outreach and getting people interested in applying. We also thought about having a booth at Westwood Day to keep people informed and direct people to this process and the application. So, we thought after Westwood Day, probably your first October meeting would be a good time to at least get that steering committee going before the holidays.
Well, you've obviously given this a lot of thought, and that's a credit to you guys and to the, the board. And I remember thinking when it was started a few years back to do the update, and there was a lot of work that already went into it, and there were just so many things that got in the way that took precedent and it languished. So, it's a credit to you to try to get everybody disciplined and back on track.
Okay. Well, good luck.
Do we need any action?
No. I'm reading. I don't see that we need action, just to let them...
Mike?
No. Just your blessing to go forward and start the recruitment process.
Well, and I would encourage you to draft kind of a, a work plan of steps along the way, you know, maybe a diagram form so people can see, this is where the consultant comes in, or this is the stages that each one has to go through, even though the density between those stages may vary depending on the topic. But like a roadmap, so if people are on the steering committee, they have a sense of the beginning and the end.
Yeah, when they can plan a vacation again.
Yeah.
Well, what their commitment is and where their deadline is. I mean, but how, where do they have to go to do those two things, you know?
Okay.
The steps. And then, if there's consulting money that's needed, I still would say, I think either you guys have to figure out who the ultimate editor is, but it can't be sections written by 18 people in groups, you know, of two for nine topics and expect it to flow. Somebody's got to be able to bring the document up to date and have it be comprehensive and cohesive.
Right.
Not everybody writes the same way. A lot of people use bullets, some are long in the narratives, and that's, it can't go that way. You've got to have a, a document that is...
Consistent.
Consistent.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. So, next, we have the Hale Reservation 100th Birthday October Celebration. The Hale Reservation is having a anniversary celebration on October 13th. That will showcase several local musicians and be advertised as open to the public. We have been asked by the director, by Paula McGlaughlin, Director of Community and Donor Relations, that they would like to get our feel on the fact that they have not come in front of us for a liquor license yet, but would like to mention the shift of the Night Shift Brewery and its marketing for the Music Fest in October. Hale has been informed and accepts that they be marketing at their own risk if we do not approve their license. So, we, Paula will have her materials and application for us at our next meeting on September 11th. And if they're willing to take the risk, I don't see why not.
And they, they've...
Is there a risk?
Yeah.
We have no control.
They're not new to this either.
Right.
They've had events and they've needed licenses before, so they understand the process. I don't, none of us, or I don't know Night Shift Brewery and what their reputation is, and I think that's a pivotal issue that we'll have to evaluate when it comes to us.
Right. That's one of the reasons why we haven't, we're not bringing them forward, because we haven't gone through that evaluation process. But I think what they were really hoping to do is to alert the board that this, because you're going to see the advertisement that when it comes out...
Which is smart of them to do that.
Yeah, yeah. Probably very smart to do that, yes.
That's appropriate.
Yeah, so I'm okay with it. Okay. John?
I am as well.
Yes, okay. So, next, we have a 26-page document.
Yeah.
I think we should study it between now and the next meeting.
A draft municipal FY19 goals for our town administrator and staff.
So, I heard a couple of additional ones I need to add...
Okay.
As a result of this meeting.
So, we can take it up at our next meeting.
Well, can you update it and send it out in a Word document?
Yes, I can.
So, we can just provide input directly?
Yes, we'll do that.
And then, maybe you give an up, present an update at the next meeting?
An update, yeah. That would be great. That would be great. The, the process was intended to give you a document. You could start thumbing through, start getting some ideas. You gave me some more tonight. We'll incorporate those, we'll get it out, and then, if you can give me feedback on that, what you need added, if you need something subtracted. So, the next time we're bringing it, it's pretty much vetted and we'll just...
Can you think of having a cover page or another page that is thematic versus task-oriented? So, for instance, in the review, you heard about communication. It's both communication with the board and communication to the community, in the community. So, to, to highlight some key themes for the year that go, accompany the overall body of goals, because some of the individual goals get to those themes, but they're across different departments. So, if you could just take a step back and think, are there two or three or four themes that you just want to highlight as an important overview? Because then, I think if we have that, then it's more easily measured over the course of the year, that not only are the tasks being done, but they're helping us meet overarching goals.
Okay. Let me think about that. See if I can come up with something.
So, communication would be one.
All right. I've heard that one a few times tonight.
And communication would be another one, and maybe the third one.
Okay. Moving along to our old business. We have the MSBA School Building Committee CEO Representative. So, we had this at our last meeting. The Board of Selectmen to appoint a, planist to appoint the chairman, the sitting chairman, to serve on the Massachusetts School Building Association Committee, and that will change every, as, every year as the chair changes.
And then, you, you are appointed too, Mike, right?
I am.
As an official?
Yes.
And the finance director as well.
Yes.
Do you know the frequency of these meetings? Any understanding?
Not yet.
I think it, I think it's each individual town develops their own system of...
But Emily hasn't...
She hasn't been more specific.
Indicated anything yet?
She's, she's kind of doing what need step that needs to be done, so.
Okay. We have to move that, right?
Yeah. We have to appoint.
Move mine. I died.
You just died? You're supposed to charge it before you come to a meeting.
No, no, it keeps timing out. For the Board to verbally indicate its support for this process and confirm that Michael Walsh will serve as Chief Executive Officer, is that on the MS School Building Committee in fiscal year 2019?
We have, we need a formal motion to appoint.
To appoint him?
Yeah. Not just to, not to verbally indicate support, but we need a motion to appoint him.
So, I would move that the Board vote to appoint Michael Walsh to serve as the Chief Executive Officer Representative on the MSBA School Building Committee for fiscal year 2019.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right. Next, we have the signing of a local action application regulatory agreement. This is for the two affordable units at Islington. This is an application to be submitted to the local action units for the regulatory agreement.
I wouldn't have put you at the end, I promise.
I won't hold it against anyone.
Haven't we already signed this? That was my only...
No.
Not for this one. So, Sarah?
Yes. Sarah Bouchard, I'm the housing agent. So, this is part of status update and partly a request for action. The status update on this application, which is for the additional one affordable unit located at 321 Washington Street, it needs a local action unit application to the state, the Department of Housing and Community Development. That application cannot be submitted until we have certain information to be provided by the leasing agent to be hired by Protrusial Properties. That developer has indicated that he is not ready to procure that leasing agent until certain terms are agreed upon by CVS as part of the whole development deal down there. So, I do not have an application for you to sign. My request for action would be that the Board consider taking the same action that it did a year ago for the first two affordable units, which is to authorize the chair to sign that application when it is ready. The rationale behind that request is that DHCD does often take a fair amount of time to review these applications. And I have some concern about getting that application signed in time for the first closing, which is scheduled for this fall. That's a consideration for you to make if you decide not, that you're not comfortable with that authorization. I just wanted you to have all that information, and I'm attempting to advance this as quickly as possible without further delay.
I'm okay with it.
I can answer questions about this application if you have any.
I do have a question, Sarah. So, the units are fully occupied right now.
Two affordable units, correct?
All 12 units are occupied.
All 12, yep.
So, one of the remaining 10 of the non-two would become a affordable unit...
Correct.
Once there's a turnover?
Correct.
Is that how it plays out? Okay. I just wanted to know the...
Well, I can think of a tenant who might be turning over.
Let's not go there.
Okay. I would move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the chairman to sign the application for local action units and the regulatory agreement at a later time contingent upon the application agreement, contingent that the application agreement did not substantially change from previous applications submitted by the town for this property.
Why is that clause in there, do not substantially change?
So...
It can't change. It's, it's what we're agreeing to tonight, right? Why would it change at all?
So, if there's some minor modifications to the application that was previously sort of it...
Like, just help me understand what could...
So, the, the regulatory agreement for this additional unit will be almost identical, if not exactly identical, to the ones for the first two units. The other major portion of this local action unit application is the Fair Housing Marketing Plan, which will be different because the developer has, is securing a different leasing agent than was used for the affordable units already permitted at that property. But the content of that plan is not supposed to change. It, it needs to hit a certain number of marks for DHCD to approve it. I would not bring an application before the whole board or before the chair that didn't hit all of those important points that DHCD requires. But it'll be a different agent. It'll be, yeah, exactly.
Okay. Thank you. I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
All in...
You want to take?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Next, we have the, thank you, Sarah. Next, we have the Westwood Media Center Transfer of Funds. So this is to transfer funds from our Comcast and our Verizon contracts from the town and move it over to the Westwood Media Center. This is our PEG access funding. So we are moving nineteen thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and seventy-four cents under one license from Comcast, the second from Comcast, three thousand, one hundred fifty-three oh one, and our two Verizons, one is forty-one thousand, seventy-three dollars and sixty-nine cents, and the second one from Verizon, seventeen thousand, eight hundred forty, eight hundred dollars and forty-six cents, for a total of eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety cents. So we are going to transfer those from our account to approve the transfer to Westwood Media Center.
I move that we transfer the aforementioned amounts.
To Westwood Media Center, and I second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Next, we have approval of minutes. First, we have the June 11th. Okay, yes, oh, that was mine, okay.
This is yours, okay. I'm using. I move that we approve the June 11, 2018 minutes.
Hold on, I have an edit.
Oh, okay.
Please, bottom of page seven, the Municipal Facilities Task Force is actually the Town Facilities Task Force. And there's just a minor typo on page eight. Third paragraph up from the bottom, N-Hide asks Town Administrator for feedback. See that paragraph?
Yep.
Okay, the fourth line after the period, both the Town Administrator and Community and Economic Development.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right.
Thanks, Chuck.
Anything else?
Nope.
I move that we approve the June 11, 2018 minutes as amended.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
June 27th.
Anything? I move that we approve, that the Board approve the June 27, 2018 minutes as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Last but not least, July 23rd. Wow, you guys are really up to date.
I have a question on page 11, the topic, Future Board of Selectmen Meetings, August Schedule. I don't know what we have, what August schedule, I don't think needs to be there.
Oh, yeah, no, we can take that. Delete this. Okay.
I move that we approve the July 23, 2018 minutes as amended.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So we have, any questions from the public press? No, okay, seeing none. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 11th, because of the Jewish holiday, on Monday, the 10th. We will be at Carby Street.
Correct.
At 50 Carby Street, starting at 7:30. That's it. Any motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.